I just thought that, you know, we might need to end the agreement, you know, for the maintenance, that it ought to be drawn up in a letter or whatever at the time that somebody takes, moves in.
Well, if we probably would, but you know, when we get under construction, that'd be, there's gonna be something to think about with, you know.
Yeah, I understand Stanley, I just.
Yeah, it's something to think about though. Does anybody else have any new business? Cause no, we're gonna move on. All right. I need a motion on item number 40, sign for process, damn first check received, P O.
Item number five.
Item number five, yeah. Did y'all look at this, Clark? Item number six, approved. Oh, yeah.
Department's here.
Yes.
Marvin Nolan.
Yes. He is. Item number six is to approve commissions proceedings from previous meetings. I'm gonna make a motion, we approve it.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Marvin Nolan.
Yes.
Department's here.
Yes.
Did y'all look at the blanket P Os? That girl from jail. All right, we need a motion, Friday, number seven.
My second.
All right.
Marvin Nolan.
Yes.
Department's here.
Yes.
Paul Story.
Yes. Okay, item number eight, to discuss, consider signing October month report for election board, treasurer, and court clerk office. Sound like a motion on eight.
My second.
Mark's here.
Yes.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Marvin Nolan.
Okay, item number nine, to discuss, consider signing resolution for November jail payment. I'll make a motion, we pay that, that'll be ten thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
My second.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Department's here.
Yes.
Marvin Nolan.
You gonna try that mowing?
Heck yeah.
I don't know that we, we really made that work until January.
What's in January?
But we, we won't have any prisoners in January, but it's just something we're gonna start thinking about, getting some numbers on. I hate to go ask somebody for something, but we don't have the facilities to keep them. But we're gonna start thinking about it, looking at it. But no other business, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to Jerry. You love that debate, man. People chasing after it.
Yeah.
I'd like to just state, the, this is being recorded and it'll be placed on the new Sentinel website sometime this week before Friday, and everything from the front of this desk forward is being recorded.
Y'all, Paul, Paul Story.
We here.
Marvin Nolan.
Department's here.
Here. All right, we're passing around, yes, to recognize, thank you everybody for being here. Now, we're not under new business. What's the plumber, plumber look like there, Randy?
I just, I just talked to Vance a minute ago, he said he was older. He hadn't seen any signs of action done, I called that Roy Johnson, I hadn't heard back from him yet. But I did call Acorn, and I had them email me all the information that they sent down here to Matt, so that we could order parts, and you don't have the right part numbers and stuff without equipment, so we just gotta find somebody to implement it, so I'll have some, uh, technical copies that friend has, so that they got them up there, get those parts listed and stuff, but we're dealing with finding somebody changing them.
Well, I was out there this morning, people, they said they acted like Matt didn't really want to do it.
Well, that's kinda the report I got.
But I mean, we, surely a plumber out there, you know, that can work with, somewhere.
Well, we'll see, we'll hear back from Mr. Johnson, see if he, uh, uh.
Rick, I seen one of the mowing trucks in town, was that a mowing truck, do they run down here?
I don't know.
I don't, I think you did, but I seen one down there. That's Mark Mullen, he's got that mowing plumbing up there.
I seen that crossroads.
You did?
The old one in Coburn.
Yeah, yeah, I might, but you didn't do that.
The one with Coburn.
Probably know what they're doing, too.
I'll bet you, they've done that before.
Speaking of jail, there's forty-one prisoners up there. And I asked if there was any immediate problems, and they didn't mention any, lady I was talking to. That's a ten people reduction from last week, which is always good. And I guess, under new business, uh, last week, we talked about there was some retirement deficiencies out there, and Clark, you thought you were okay in your district, and Marvin, yours, uh, I'm trying to figure out where I got this number, is your amount six thousand dollars?
I don't know what it's worth, I don't know.
Does that sound close?
No, because we paid, when then nothing's gotten done, we haven't paid, so we didn't pay the money, we're trying, we're paying, and it's, and, 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 I'm curious that kind of about it.
So, would that be six thousand total, or each?
No, we're gonna pay that, cause we're the sole for one.
Okay, you think the remainder would be about six thousand?
Yes, I'm on that.
And then Paul? You what?
I will check, so you can see.
Okay. And Paul, you think yours is twenty-one thousand?
I know we're gonna go through Robert's, Henry never paid a dime, and on there's twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand.
That has to be paid, and... And like I explained last week, if that's not paid, then the county is stuck with the whole twenty percent, says sixteen percent, I mean, you know, we get to pay the employee's part and the county's part, that's.
Did you check in to see about it?
Well, we passed the resolution, if you do not get your second check here unless you signed up on Opers, because we're not gonna do stuff with that again.
Did you check to see how much for sure it is in dollars?
Twenty-two thousand, yes, they called, they've already, Opers already called us.
And how are you, when they pay for that?
It'll have to come, it'll have to come out of my M and O, district three, M and O.
And this has been ongoing for many years?
Ever since I've been here.
How come we didn't address it to pay it?
We have, we have addressed it in the past, Randy, we, I said, we have a resolution here in Haskell County that we passed a year or two after I got here, but, like I said, it doesn't show up if somebody retires, and they may work here twenty years before they retire, and then, and they go through the Opers system, they come back.
Okay, well, I'm trying to get a handle on it, when is this twenty-two thousand dollars gonna be due?
Today, now.
So, you're gonna be paying that out of your M and O?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's gonna be done this week, or?
It'll be done before the first of the year. I just had some money deposited, but you might have to let it go through the system, and...
And Marvin, you want that year's take through, within view?
But this potentially, this could crop up, this could keep coming up for a little while.
Whenever somebody goes to Paul's or jail, does anybody find out?
Yeah, they might be working for the, Op, Op, I mean, the prison, I put my cows, they could be working for any government agency, and worked here, ten, fifteen years ago, for four or five years, it's probably back up at any time.
I'm still confused.
I'm confused.
I stay that way all the time, but anyway. Is there not, like, if you work for a regular company and retirement is coming out, there's a record, so that each month that, is there, is there no checks and measures to not let this, I know you signed a resolution, it shouldn't, but is, is there no checks or measures to make sure these people?
Well, see, the commissioners, a long time back, cause there's much turnover out there at the jail, so they, they put in there, you hadn't worked six months before, they started hauling it out, that's where, that's where it all comes from. Well, Marvin, I'm, that's true, but once the six months rolled around, they never bothered putting them on there, cause Dorothy worked, we owe twenty-two thousand dollars. But that's where it all comes back. And you figure, uh, hundred and twenty dollars a month, you figure out how long it took to run up to twenty-two thousand dollar bill. So, man. Yeah, well, you know, they take out twenty percent of her check, and she was making, what, she started eighteen fifty.
But it won't happen again, cause you've done that resolution, but?
That is correct.
And we have, probably about six years, it's been six or seven years since, or something like that.
It's been a while, but, like I say.
Is there anything else outstanding that we need to be paying attention to and get focused on, does anybody know? So, the ones that are at hand here, this, this twenty-eight thousand dollars total, will be paid out both in those, uh, central and western districts, not in the year.
On mine will be, Randy, I mean, I can't wait too long.
Karen, the P O for Jim Newcomb, did we ever get that made up yet? I should say, Newcomb and Associates, but, uh... Are you gonna be at your office right after me? Okay. Something we probably need to talk about here in the courthouse, you know, we're diligently trying to resolve the heat and air range problem and everything else, and, Rick and I were discussing it this morning about, uh, we've got some compressors sitting outside, they're just sitting idle, we don't know if they're good or bad or what, they're used to air conditioning, they're further floor, but, uh, maybe exploring avenue of, because there's such a big void up there in the ceiling of the courthouse, or the courtroom, that maybe we could put a conventional type heating and cooling system up there, and house some equipment in the third floor, but use the heat and cool the second floor, and, uh, why, just, we're setting up there. The air handling part and the furnaces that are upstairs look pretty fused up, but, uh, so I thought we might, uh, talk to, maybe Matt or somebody about, uh, thinking about that.
We're looking into it, but we had our first meeting, uh, about, you know, raising some money, we're, we're gonna meet again a week from Lamar, and some more, we did get started on it.
For the fundraising?
For the fundraising, we, we met last Tuesday, and we're gonna make a week from Lamar, and take the next turn.
Well, there's a lot of period there that's just void and vacant, and we may have to cut some through those concrete walls, you know, to run ducts or something like that, but it might be a good avenue to, a lot cheaper avenue, less, not cheap, less expensive to heat and cool that with forced air versus putting, you know, water coming back in or something like that.
And we also took out all the shrubbery and the trees that we, we're gonna re-landscape that. We hadn't heard anything from the glass guy, Kathy and Associates, but I called him and talked to him, and he's still waiting on some of the quotes on materials for the, um, testament on the glass, but, uh, he hadn't got it this time, unless he's got glass there too. But he's still working on it.
Anybody else got anything in new business?
Oh, I don't know if this is new business, who's in charge of making the, uh, people that are running for office take their signs down? We still have some signs up over town, they're not, they're not, I mean, the election's over, they need to be down. Who, who is in charge?
I guess we could call the candidates and ask them to remove their signs.
I'd ask Rhonda, if there's any policy for that, over in the election board.
Yeah.
Randy's probably right, you probably said to call the candidate.
I know they put an ad in the paper, that's already run, please remove your sign, but they're not removing, I mean, our local people have, but, well, not all of them have, but, I noticed, I used to think they looked at them when they were, it's killing them.
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm curious if Marvin can answer a question for me, on, um, where the funds for a grant that you got were spent on Airport Road.
Where it was got, where the grant was got, Cato?
No, where the funds were spent.
On Airport Road?
Um, well, according to this grant that you got, the grant was to start on Route eleven sixty and go to Route eleven seventy, and there's not anything been done on that road.
I've done all the, I've done, uh, what I got for Airport Road, and it says Airport Road.
It says, beginning at the intersection of C R E eleven sixty.
Where'd you get this information?
Well, I got this from Cato, and I have the copies of the grant right here.
I got a copy of Cato dinner, too, says Airport Road.
Well, yeah, it says Airport Road, but it says to start on one section and go to...
I did, I started on the four end, had four-way stop, and down a mall, then I've done the rest of it last year.
It says eleven sixty continuing south to eleven seventy, that road has not been done.
Was eleven seventy at?
It's basically where Mike Rose lives, that corner, but it says to start at eleven sixty, which is where Ozwoski lives and comes south.
I didn't put an N for nothing from there.
Well, that's what it says.
I don't care what it says, I know where I got it from Cato, and what I told them, and I've got it, and I'll bring you the proof.
Okay.
It was from start right there at the four-way corner.
But you didn't start that either, you started at number nine?
No, I didn't, I done that for the, the first year, uh, before I'd finished that other, on Rose's, I done his first.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, your, your grant says it started at eleven sixty, so...
I'll put it where it was supposed to go.
Okay.
So, that was the past Rose, like, that's Mike Rose's?
Uh, eleven seventy is, yeah, it's north of Mike Rose's, that four-way.
That's where that intersection is?
Yeah, that's where the intersection is. So, you're gonna bring, you can bring it to me next week?
I'll get it, I don't know about next week, but I'll get it, I'll get it, I'll get it from Cato.
Okay.
All right.
That's okay, I'll just call C E B.
We'll call him.
One of our, uh, test wells down, the one that's around here, can y'all have somebody root in to check that, to see if they make any water, I know we don't have any, probably get some rain.
I was thinking about that, just a while ago, you know, I was, I was trying to say, I hope they drain this, so we can see what's gonna happen with them, but, it wouldn't hurt to check this one right here today, cause that, that was pretty wet.
Right up.
Just got some water.
All the roads are dry off the bottom, except this one, it was moist, all the way. Both were pouring muddy in the bottom, and...
Yeah, it was, it was pretty wet. But that's a possibility, Randy, it's possible to do that one.
All the conversation down there, two minutes.
Well, that's an indicator right there, that's what's going in.
Do you think, there probably is no way, if we set a, a piece of pipe, you know, the big pipe going down, if we went down like a, I don't know, six, eight inches, a foot below ground, drilled a hole in it, had another piece of pipe running this way, to drain, that, that water probably never pushed that up that high, would it?
You know, you got to have something to bother them.
What I was thinking, but I, I didn't know if that would keep pushing that up high enough to roll it out, another pipe? Or not.
There's nothing low enough around here, we shot it all the way down towards rural, it's not nothing low enough to really make it drain, there's even space to drain, too. Maybe if we go through winter and spring, we could, we'd monitor, we'd see.
That's massive.
See what, uh, see how much water it's making, and that's, uh, just make a decision for whether we need to put French drains in or well points. And the way it's broke up around the courthouse, we may end up putting some French drains through some well points right at the, at the side of the building, we might have to have a multiple series of them, you know, pumping into... This is outside drainage. It'll tell in the spring when we get our rains, rather than, what, what we're gonna have to do to it.
Yeah, it's always rained at the end of a dry spell, so I guess it, we'll be able to do it again, and we'll find out.
The, uh...
I hope it rains, pretty good.
Yeah.
Room downstairs, just this side of the, where the compressor is and boiler that are locked up, does anybody know who's got the key?
Mm-hmm. You talking about on the same side the boiler is?
Yeah.
That is the DA's evidence room.
The district attorney's.
You'd have to get with him.
Okay.
I mean, I've been in there, and that stuff that's in there, but I'm not in that business, it'd be, I don't know what it'd be now, but it's his anyway.
They're gonna need, the reason I'm asking that, they're gonna need to open, when they do that survey to measure and do the foreplay, they're gonna need to open all of them, get access to it, so I'm just trying to figure out, uh, and then upstairs, each electoral's got their own space up there, is that how that works, Karen? Everybody knows who's, who's got water, maybe? Y'all carry, carry that stuff up there, or does Ron do that? Ron takes it up there?
Speaking of taking stuff up there, how do you think, when you start moving some of that, those books and things you were talking about earlier, don't they, they throw anything away, that they don't have superior knowledge to throw away, or cause, some records did get thrown away several years ago, long before their time, but, um, that should not have been thrown away, legally they should have been kept, so, I'd be very sure that somebody doesn't get down there and toss something that shouldn't be tossed. So, I'd be very sure that somebody doesn't get down there and toss something that shouldn't be tossed.
I think I saw a grant the other day, we could get a bunch of that digitalized.
Yeah, but you still have, they still trying to pass legislation, we still have to keep it. But I, I hope that legislation passes, we don't have to keep it, but, and it does need to be, only, you're right, it does need to be done, but you still have to keep it. You, you can't, you still can't throw it away legally, or dispose of it, I suppose.
I don't even know that they're organized up there or anything else, that there's just scads up there. It's not like a one semi truckload, there's, there's several semi loads of it up there.
It was kinda like that in the basement several years ago, and they just tossed it into the dumpster, and some just think it shouldn't have been tossed.
It probably got destroyed. It's in that basement.
So if you take care of the water problem, will that make the basement available then?
Yes. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Get rid of.
Number one, we've got to get the water out of the bottom of the courthouse, and, and, and when I say that, it's not like it's flooded, it, it's dry down there right now, but there's so many avenues for the water to migrate in and, and keep it damp and, and suitable. So we're trying to, instead of letting the water gather in the courthouse and then be pumped out, we're gonna try to gather it outside of the courthouse. And there's an entire floor down there that's available for all kinds of storage, if we can dry it up and secure it. And we need to get the, upstairs, get the books out of there, so that we can demolish all the old jail facility that's up there, those old metal walls and stuff, all of them had to be cut out, and you wouldn't dare go up there with torches and stuff, because you couldn't keep it from catching on fire, and stack all the wall. Another thing under new business, uh, have y'all heard anything from Quasimodo, that full plan, of that building or anything?
I'm sure he's bringing it first Monday of the month. I don't know that, but I, I heard he will.
The avenue of taking a full acre, uh, to do that, is that, where did that acre come from, that idea maybe?
It came from the audit, but I did talk to him, and as I said, and he, he kinda backed up on that acre. But I think the reason he said the acre, Randy, is when he was looking at the place out here, it's an industrial park, the way the land was set up, you know, to get to, to go in and out with the ambulance, I think that's why he said that, it was an acre for that, if we went in that one spot. Do the, the lucky toes and other times.
Okay. So y'all are still in agreement that if we can work something out with the city, disposal of that old hospital, and providing a piece of partial property there, when it gets built, still sound like a plan to y'all?
Yeah. I had no problem telling anybody to end that. I don't care. But I went up there, and there's a couple of nice buildings on that property now, that, you know, not connected to the hospital. They wouldn't be suitable for what we need, but-
Yeah, you could see that was the, that one was the animal store, but then it's a lot bigger now, they used to-
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it, it won't work now.
Is the plan to demolish the old hospital, you know?
Yeah.
Trying to kill two birds with one stone, basically, to provide them, that'll put them into a pound of the new hospital, the ambulance service.
Yeah, I look at all.
And get rid of that old building.
Oh, yeah, can? This is pretty close, I don't know who it was, but that's one of them G N I services.
Has anybody ever checked on-
Seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Another ambulance service?
You need, it's, yes, but that, you need to talk to them, see what county it's like that other.
With what it's placed, with what sign it was, you know?
Just houses in it, but you let, you let them pay them, I don't know who that was, but- I guess somebody, but there's always a name in it, so, I mean, I don't know who it was.
I've had several people ask me about, uh, came up on the pipeline that's coming through the county, they paid each district a sum of money, is that correct?
They gave me any, I don't know, but-
Yeah, we, we, we got two thousand dollars for every across.
Well, you hadn't got it.
Yeah, last year.
Oh, yeah, last year.
Well, we, we split it a month for three districts, but it wasn't in the last meeting, did y'all didn't receive any in the last meeting? Yeah, we, y'all remember that, what was that, that was, that wasn't in this pipeline though, that was just a crossover for fiber optic. Does that, do they have their hand, do they give the checks to y'all, or is it a box down here?
It's always been split three ways, no matter who's there.
Yeah.
Split in three ways.
Okay. I just, I got people asking, I just need to have an answer to them.
Does anybody have any more in new business, or anyone?
The ambulance deal, has anybody ever checked with, supposedly the other three counties that join us has went to another ambulance service, because they're cheaper. With McIntosh and Glademar, another county, it's probably went to some other bunch, because it was cheap.
They might have, we did bid it. How long ago was that, we did that? It's last year, we, we went out for bids, and it was the cheapest in our county. But there is some kinda statute in the law that you don't have to bid that every year, I mean, I have that at county bond, we, we pulled it up. It's considered a professional service.
You had the, if you get it cheaper, and you can get the, the other bunch that's over there closer, that way if we needed a, a backup, you'd, they'd be closer backup than wherever. I don't know, he don't want around here, I mean, I mean, has he got any other counties besides us right here?
I thought he did, he, he did, and I don't, I haven't asked him in the last, since the last process, you know, ever kinda go through it. We, um-
That just kinda seems crazy, we paying to, to, to do business here. Have y'all ever asked to audit their books, to see how much their sales are here in the county?
You mean the ambulance people?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been inquired about that, somebody in my district asked me that one time, and I inquired while we were paying them ten thousand dollars, and I did get a legitimate answer, Randy.
And I understand that, and what I'm talking about is, how many dollars in ambulance costs do they do a month in this county?
We were there in an accident, two little girls, a fourth minute, charged a forty thousand dollar bill. They were getting down a fourth minute. They didn't have a gun, they haven't had a gun, they had to act so good.
But then, we, how much did that delay? That's, that's what, the only thing I'm asking is, is have we ever, have we ever asked them to, you know, for what they do in business?
Randy, I don't, I mean, I understand in private business you could do that, but I don't even know if that's legal to ask. All you can do is go out for bids.
It's legal if it's protected.
Well, I know, but, you know, you can go out for bids for ambulance service, but, and I'm, they are audited every year, and I'm sure you could look at the audit, I'm sure it's public knowledge, but, you know, it's, if they get to bid, and they're making money, you just look at the audit.
I just think it's funny-
It's a yearly deal, you can get, you got, every year, you know, you could change.
Paying to be here, and then they're never gonna build a place to stay.
I know, but, okay, I didn't explain that to you, Jim Bob. The state legislators put in the meals on your property tax for EMS services only. Now, your state legislator's the one that's done that. And the money does, is accumulating in the account over there. And like I told Randy, and if somebody has an idea, speak up, but besides building a, the only legal way to spend that money would be to build a nice facility, where you could attract other vendors. What, there's no other legal way to spend the money? Unless you wanna give him a big raise.
I was thinking about giving y'all some of it.
We can't get it, we can't touch that money.
We could try to rent it, though.
We was, you can't even rent the building, Tim. That money can only be spent for EMS purposes only, nothing else.
The, the thing it would, could be done is, we've talked about this before, is, is you could build that facility, that's what the money's being captured for right now. It, it's saved up, you could build a facility that might enhance, somebody else could be more competitive, or some more competitive vendors on the ambulance service. Plus, it would generate commerce here in the county by building the facility, number one, and number two, it would be an enhancement to the county overall.
And like I said, it'd be, it's for, like you were talking about, Jim Bob, if you had a ambulance facility that come, that come in here and, hey, I don't have to pay rent in that county, I can do this a lot cheaper. Versus now, they're having to pay rent for a building, and they, whether it's right or wrong, that's just the law, and that's the way it's set up.
So y'all could have your own ambulance service, I guess, if you can, and-
No, we could have our own building. Haskell County could own the building, which like Randy just said-
We should have our own ambulance service, it was not a, it wasn't managed properly. But, uh, yeah, that's our option, to, to have one, have it attached to the hospital, run through the hospital, that's what it was before. And then it got separated out, because it was always losing money, and then it finally, eventually became impractical for us to have one, and, and so we hired down these other companies that managed it on a, you know, a little tighter scale than we were. But that's, I just asked a question, if we had any idea or in the past?
You could look at the audit, and I'm sure Karen has last audit in her office.
It's on the website, also, the auditor's office, I'll say.
Do you, do you have to give them, like, is there a set number in the meals you have to give them, like?
Yes, that's set by legislation. It's on everybody's property tax. You pay it, every, whoever's paying property tax is paying for the ambulance service.
And it's a statewide, right? They said you just count, it's a statewide?
That's right.
I mean, I know ours is three point one six.
Mm-hmm, that's about right.
I just need to find out if there's, other counties have gotten different ones, I didn't know.
Well, he might have bid it different, I mean, I don't know what he bid at other counties, I just know when he bid it, and he give us, still give us the best deal.
Not saying anybody's unhappy, or anybody is concerned, or anything, that there's a problem or an issue, it's just good business to reinvestigate things as you go. And, um, that's, there's just been a lot of questions asked about it, and, uh, everybody wonders the same thing, why are we paying them, you know, ten thousand dollars a month to be here? And, uh, it's, it's just a means of answering questions, and it never hurts to look at another avenue.
I agree one hundred percent.
Need to keep an open mind and-
That's the way it's done, as far as I know, across those states of Oklahoma, you know, it's on everybody's property tax, certain meal. Only problem I have, Randy, like I said, I, you know what, how much money's over there, several hundred thousand dollars, that it just keeps accruing.
Well, we've, we're, we're working at some avenues to build a facility for, for housing an ambulance service, and we've talked to them about it in this meeting room. They're, right now, they're located down there, and they're renting off Chalk Town, he said their rent was going up from eight hundred to twelve hundred, and, uh, everybody in the county that I've talked to says they feel like it'd be better if it was at the hospital, so, uh, I've talked to the city, and the city thought the same thing, that it should be attached or close by the hospital, and, so we kinda came up with a plan of, what are we gonna do with the old hospital when it's gone, here, or when it's not being used anymore, it's obviously, it needs to be tore down. And the, the city is always constantly on a campaign to try to clean old buildings and structures and stuff up. So it just kinda came up in a meeting that that'd be a, a good place to put a, a housing for an ambulance service, and then it could still belong to the county, it could still own the facility, the county would.
Well, we'd have to do the way the mill was set up.
Right, and, and so therefore, uh, the, the city would clean the rest of the property up, and that's what they're trying to do, so, I was asked to bring it to y'all, and see what you thought about it, and everybody's in agreement with it, and we're just investigating, and we're sure not pointing no fingers, or saying anything's out of whack or wrong. Which is, we're inquisitive about it, because that's what we need to, that's in the best interest of the guys.
We're looking at two years before we can tear it down, is that right?
I'm not sure what the schedule is for the hospital, to tell you the truth, Paul, uh, Mickey App, probably.
Somewhere in that area, give or take.
Then would they pay us rent?
No, we can't charge them.
We can't charge them rent.
Oh, you can't charge them rent?
Cannot charge them rent, because they, that is their building, their money paid for it. I've already called auditors and asked that.
I get you that money that was held out each time, that's what we paid for it?
We wanted to do that, but I called state auditors, and that is not legal. We cannot do that.
But if we can't charge them rent, the, the benefit of having a new facility is, number one, it would attract, uh, you know, competitive bidding on the ambulance service, and, and, and they may be the best there is. I've never hear any complaints from them, everybody thinks they do a good job. He certainly handles himself well in here, and, um, I certainly don't have any problem with him, I just, it's a good interest to the county that we always constantly research and see if there's a better or cheaper avenue to, to take. So, uh, with that being said, the, the real payoff of, of the new building is, is there's money been accruing all these years for a facility, and it would just be a great enhancement for whoever's operating the ambulance service, plus the county would have a nice structure, new structure, plus we get rid of the old hospital, so it's, it's, every avenue's got a winning side to it, I mean, it's, it would be a big plus everywhere.
What about maintenance and upkeep on it? Will that be covered out of that money, yours?
Yeah, you could use that money to do it, and that's a good question, it's fifteen ton, but you know, you're, I would be hoping with the new facility, that the maintenance and operation will be pretty low. Now, they would pay the electric and water bill, so far as a driveway, or, you know, you think an asphalt parking lot and a metal building, you, there shouldn't be much maintenance on it, should there? I mean, for a while, if you asphalt a parking lot, and you have a metal building, that's somebody runs through it.
Just plumbing and, you know, heating air?
Well, right, heating air, but you know, you- Well, right, heating air, but you know, you...
It would have to, it would really need, be, the county does need to take on the responsibility of, of doing day-to-day maintenance, that would be due to the persons that are there in it. They'd be responsible for all the utilities and upkeep of the facility, to keep it in as good a condition when they moved in as when they left, and be held accountable for it.
I agree, I was just trying to bring it up.
And that way, we can't say it's ever gonna be zero cost to the county, but it'd be minimal.
Okay, and this coming, this millage continues, right? So if they're in that building, there would still be money coming in?
The millage isn't gonna stop unless the legislators do it. We don't, we don't, that county doesn't control that.
So that money would still be coming in?
It's coming in every year.
And, and it would have to be used for things?
It goes into EMS accounts, that's, you cannot get it spent unless it's for them.
And it, and it could be for, you know, different types of things, such as, uh, an additional ambulance stalls or bays added to it, you know, and that's what we try to do when we design it, to where if it's ever gonna increase in size, that we've got the room to expand, and, and the tax would provide that avenue to do that. Plus, uh, uh, equipment, you know, I mean, technology's changing all the time, and the radio system that's being used now may be, may be changed out. What about Deacon Elipan? Yeah, and, and, and that's another thing, that, uh, I think in the plans of the new hospital, there is one there.
And we have one in Enterprise. Pick up, you know, for his director, I think there are a few scattered around the county.